I'll call to order the Monday, August 12th, 2024 meeting of the North Andover Select Board. We're back from our executive session. If everyone could please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, first item on the agenda is public comment. Per Select Board policy, public comment is not a discussion, debate, or dialogue between citizens and the Select Board as a citizen's opportunity to express his or her opinion on issues of town business. The Board may respond to a public comment by taking it under consideration when deliberating on an agenda item, or referring the item to the administration for appropriate action or response. Public comment shall be for a period of up to 15 minutes, with speakers being allowed three minutes to present their material. Is anyone here for public comment?
Stan Lippert, 43, Stone Cleve Road. I wanted to thank Chief Gray and the North Andover Police Department for a wonderful National Night Out last week. It was such a great event. You know, we have some wonderful events in our town, Sheep Charing, Fall Festival, the Christmas Parade, but I've come to almost like National Night Out as much as any of the others. It's a, it's a great format to get our community together and to really get families to come out and have a lot of fun. It's just a fun event. It's fun to see everybody and there's, you know, since nobody's selling anything, it's just all fun and free and it's always very educational. I always learn something new about all our groups in town, some of which I'm unaware of. So I just wanted to thank our police department for a wonderful evening.
Thanks, Stan. Any additional public comment? Okay. All right, move on to new business. Item A, the appointment of KP Law as Special Municipal Counsel.
So when we do our regular appointments, we usually include these and we realize we forgot. So you have two. One is KP and we bring them in just for additional help if we have something that's specialized. For instance, we, the RecPlex. And then the second one, number B, is Norris Murray. And they are a special municipal council who actually helps us with labor issues.
Do you want us to take these together or separate?
You can, absolutely.
Okay. I will take a motion on items A and B.
I'll move approval and I'll second that.
All right, I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
The motion's carried. All right, next item C, we assign warrant, oh, to sign the warrant for the 2024 state primary.
Had to believe, right? We're already doing that?
Some states have already started.
Yeah.
Has everyone had a chance to review? All right, I will take a motion.
I'll move that the Select Board sign the 2024 state primary warrant.
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Moving right along. Item D, we have the, to approve and sign the conservation restriction for Woodley Road.
So if you remember correctly, Woodley Road was a warrant article at town meeting where we were accepting the road. We conditioned that acceptance on this conservation restriction. Unfortunately, we are actually meeting before Concom, but they have reviewed it and Amy has reviewed it and Town Council. And so this is the next step in finalizing that street acceptance.
On time.
If I recall, they were probably on our, our schedule's a little bit up because we moved our meeting up. So that's why we would otherwise be taking this after Concom.
That is true.
But we've already done this once.
We've already done it once, right, exactly.
So we still must follow the.
Not much to worry about. Just one, that part on the record. Yeah. Okay, has anyone have a chance to look at this?
I'll move approval.
I have a motion.
I'll second.
I have a second. Any further discussion? Any other questions? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, next up, item E, accept donation for the Shedford Dale Street Field.
I'll recuse myself.
You're gonna recuse yourself, okay. I believe we have a presenter tonight.
Good evening, Dean Baynes, 26 Woodbridge Road. Thank you for the opportunity to be before you tonight. I'm here tonight in my capacity as Fields Director for the North Andover Soccer Association. And NASA is requesting permission from the town to erect a shed at Dale Street Soccer Field for the use of storing soccer equipment. Before you all, I hope that you have a written intent from NASA, which outlines the intent of NASA's use of the shed, as well as the location and size of the shed. And I'm here to answer any questions that you folks may have.
I'll open up. Any questions?
What color are you painting it?
I'm sorry?
What color are you painting it?
Rosemary, I think it's gray. I think it's a shell gray.
It's gray.
Yes.
The, I was always confused. I've heard of them referred to as Dale Street Fields and then Gallagher Fields. Is Dale Street the one up, you know, you know, further up and Gallagher's further down, or they're?
So Dale Street is the one that has the parking lot immediately adjacent to.
And then Gallagher's further, further down.
Gallagher's kind of, they're directly across the street.
Thank you.
You'll get there. No matter which, what side of the street it is, you'll get there.
So this will look substantially similar to all the other sheds we have in a lot of the other fields, correct? I would imagine.
Correct. It's, it's gonna be a 10 by 12 shed, you know, shaker style, just with a garage door access, just to store soccer equipment.
And if I recall, in that location, there's access for larger equipment to get onto the fields. This isn't blocking that, right? There's a double gate, right?
There is, correct. So, so the location of the shed will be actually in the parking lot.
Okay.
Kind of in the corner of the fence, so it'll be sitting on the gravel that's already presently there.
So yes, the fences are around the, the opening of the fences are on the other side, is that right?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct. Yeah, so it shouldn't obstruct the use of those, those gates.
Okay, awesome. And yeah, and this is being donated to the town and for the exclusive use for NASA?
That is, that is correct.
That's great.
I'll move that the Select Board accept the donation of the shed for the purpose of use by North Andover Soccer Association to be located at the Dale Street Field.
I'll second that.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dean, for doing that.
Next up, item F, approve the collecting bargaining agreement between the town and New England Police Benevolent Association Local 2A Patrol for fiscal year '25 through '27.
Thank you. So tonight, we're considering two contracts. We'll just talk about them together. It's the patrol officers as well as the sergeants. First, I just want to thank Dee, Chief Gray, Lieutenant Domenico, Kelly Castello, and Carrie Messenger for all their work on negotiations this year. We've had a lot of units up, so it's good to have such a great team working on them. As you know, these, both of these contracts follow the COLA pattern that we have established with the town, which is 2% in fiscal year '25, 3% in fiscal year '26, and 3% in fiscal year '27. We do have some other adjustments within these contracts to market adjustments, accreditation stipend, changes to detail pay, including a metric that would allow us to bring in a outside company if details continue to go unfilled for a period of time. We are, have great language for military leave, light duty. We create a Labor Management Committee for evaluations, which is something that we've done with a lot of our other units and has been very popular and successful. So we're excited to continue to do that. We've worked really closely with all three of the police units. As you know, at the last meeting, we also already approved the lieutenant's contract. And all three of these contracts are within our fiduciary ability.
Okay. Do these need to be taken separately?
Yes, please.
Probably should, okay, great.
I move that the Select Board approve the agreement between the town and New England Police Benevolent Association Local 2A Patrol for fiscal year '25 through '27.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
I move that the Select Board approve the agreement between the town and New England Police Benevolent Association Local 2B Police Sergeants for fiscal year '25 through '27.
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Those are both approved.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Good work.
Thank you for great, all your hard work. I know it looks really fast up here, but we know how much work went into all of that, so we really, really do appreciate it. Next up, item H, vote to sign the historic preservation restriction for the Friends of the 1836 Meeting House.
If you remember at town meeting, we recommended some funds that would go to the Friends of the 1836 Meeting House, which is affiliated with the North Parish Church. Part of that town meeting required us to do historic preservation restriction on that property. And that was forwarded to you, I believe, earlier today, or maybe yesterday. Everything is in order on this. It has been reviewed by council.
And it's for a period of 20 years, correct?
Period of 20 years.
Very similar to what we did with the barn.
Yes, it is.
And if future granting is made, it can be recast out another 20 years?
Absolutely, yes. It's only contingent to this $480,000 that we're currently granting them.
Excellent, okay. I'll take a motion.
I move that the Select Board approve and sign the historic preservation restriction for Friends of 1836 Meeting House.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, motion carries. Next up, we have the appointment of Laura Craig Coman and James Testa as full members of the Zoning Board of Appeals. Janice, may I kick this over to you real quick?
Yeah, sure. Both of these individuals have served already on the Zoning Board of Appeals, and we are always a little bit excited when they get to be moved up from associate member to full member. And yeah, we're happy to do so for these two committed volunteers, so. And then we'll be looking to fill a couple more spots, so get your applications in. So, on that note.
Very important committee.
It is.
Is that typically the process, that when there's, you know, when there's, what do they call, when they're not full members? Thank you for the reminder. When there, is that the typical process when there's associate members that they're, they're the first to, you know, to be appointed when there's vacancies?
Yeah, the goal is that they're like very familiar with how things operate and then, yeah, after being around for a little bit.
It's not coming cold.
And they also fill in at times if somebody else needs to recuse themselves or there's other, you know, reasons that they.
All right, I'll take a motion.
I'll move that the Select Board appoint Laura Craig Coman as a full member of the Zoning Board of Appeals through June 30th, 2025, and James Testa as a full member of the Zoning Board of Appeals through June 30th, 2026.
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
Just my question is, those terms, because that's, that's the, that's the, those are the terms that they're filling in for the remaining terms?
So it's, yeah, we had, yes.
Yes.
We're always staggering.
They stagger so we don't have a full turnover and, yes.
Sometimes it's a little switchy going on.
There is a little, there was a little bit of that, just because it ended up that they all ended up in the same year, but it is all squared away. So this is.
Excellent. Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, next up, vote for school crossing guards to be special municipal employees.
Sure. So if you remember correctly, the last time that we did special municipal employees was back in 2022. What a special municipal employee is, is a designation for a position, not a person. And it allows us to have a single person hold two positions or be paid from two different departments. As you know, it is difficult for us to get crossing guards, and we do have some part-time position, part-time people who perhaps work at the library, or as a cafeteria worker, or et cetera, who would like to be crossing guards as well, and it works with the schedule, so we would love to see that.
It's like the unit attendance would be a great.
Exactly, yes. Yeah.
But that wouldn't be under.
But, yeah, I know.
It's still, it's still, they're all considered.
Because they also.
Yeah, they're all considered a municipal employee, so they still would have to fall under the metric.
Okay. I'll take a motion.
I'll move that the Select Board designate school crossing guards as special municipal employees.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. Next up, continued discussions regarding our ongoing DEI initiative. DK's gonna present for us.
Look at that.
There we go.
We're first try. When's the last time that happened?
It's not often.
Yeah, my computer sometimes doesn't work in this room, so I'm very excited.
It's a nice one.
It's working.
Dee's using Canva, too.
I introduced her to it.
I did. I just went down a rabbit hole. Let me tell you, I love the software, it's amazing. So thank you. I am here to present an update as to where we are on our diversity, equity, inclusion work, as well as to share with you recommendations made from Root Cause, which was the group that we just finished our consulting project with, as well as some action steps that we need the Board's help with. And what we kind of see as the future of DEI work as it revolves here in North Andover. So back in 2020, the Select Board created the Commission for Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion. And its mission was to act as a central focus in the town and community advocating and advising on diversity issues, providing information, referrals, guidance, education, and coordination to public agencies, private persons, organizations, and institutions engaged in activities and programs intended to deal with issues affecting diversity, such as, but unlimited to, prejudice and discrimination against people based on their race, language, ethnicity, national origins, citizen status, gender, gender identity, sexual orientation, socioeconomic class, physical, mental ability, religion, marital status, military status, or age. So that was the mission handed down to the commission. Sorry about that. This thing's very sensitive, okay. Okay. So the DEI Commission, as it was initially populated, consisted of 16 different individuals from all of these different stakeholder groups. I won't read through all of them, but it was a combination of staff from the Human Resources Department, from the Town Manager's Office, from police, and members of the community and the school department. So there were 16 original appointees. So in the spring of 2020, the Select Board appointed the commission. There were some spots that were added after the original appointment. Some stakeholder groups came forward and said, we want to be included. So they were included in that 16. There were three meetings between October and December of 2020. And then in December of 2020, there was an unfortunate incident at one of the commission meetings during a portion of what's called storytelling, where you tell a story from your past. A racial epitaph was used, and so that caused some harm to some people that were on the call. If you recall, this is during COVID. So this was a recorded meeting over Zoom, or Google Meets, as we use here in North Andover. And so we decided that we needed to take a step back after consulting with Melissa. We came to the conclusion that we needed some professional help in this endeavor. So in January of 2021, we hired a company called Visions to work with the commission members. We worked with them virtually through COVID from February of 2021 through November. And then in November to March of '22, we met an additional three times. During that time, we had trouble making quota for open meeting law purposes. We had members leave and then new members come on who hadn't gone through the training that we'll talk about. And then I started to look at grant opportunities to see what we could do to make this a more robust program. In September of '23, the town received a Community Compact Grant, which we'll talk about. And we hired Root Cause to conduct a community survey. And then October of 2023, the town and the school received an APRA grant for an equity audit. And then March of 2024, Root Cause released the report, which we will talk about. The equity audit with the school department will likely be released in the fall because of the change in school leadership. We need to get the new leadership acclimated with what took place. So what was the vision's scope and the project of that work was to facilitate the meetings, to help us create a common language, and to also help with healing that had, you know, taken, healing for some of the harm that had taken place during that meeting. So these are just some of the things that we had worked on with visions. Different concepts like try on, which means basically try putting yourself in the other person's shoes. It's okay to disagree, but you need to do so respectfully. You know, be aware of the intent of what you're saying, but also the impact of what that might have on someone else. Practice both and thinking, which is kind of a term that I, that I really like. When we make a statement, sometimes we say, but, like, I like your opinion, but, and that negates everything you said before that. So what we started using is, I like your opinion and I'd like to offer mine, so that, you know, trying to create a culture of inclusion. Self-focus was if you really react to something someone says, rather than speak immediately, take a step back and ask yourself, why am I reacting so, you know, so quickly to what that person just had to say? So basically, working with the commission to try to create some values and some common language so that when we talk about these things, we're talking about the same thing. This cost $17,000. $5,000 of that was a donation, and then the other 12 and a half-ish came out of the Town Manager's Office budget. And so then we got the grant for the Root Cause Project. And so the Root Cause Project's scope was five prongs to this. Understanding barriers to access for people in the community, identifying if there are any language and communication needs that we aren't meeting, identify how to foster community engagement, looking at our policies and procedures that might inhibit community engagement, and then identifying opportunities for improvements to becoming a more inclusive town and better serving all residents. So with them, we did a survey, which was in-person and digital. We had a paper option as well. We put those out at the senior center. We've got some back in paper form. And we also had it translated into Spanish and Portuguese. They also did in-person focus groups and digital focus groups. So we had about 200 people participate, and one might say, that's not great, we have 30,000 people. That actually is good for this type of a survey, to get 200 people to commit to completing the entire thing. So what was some of the results that we found? Well, the town has a strong foundation. So asked, you know, if you feel connected to the community, 94% of people said they felt connected at some level. But 20% said they feel connected only to a small group, and four said they feel isolated without true community. The need for continued effort, you know, they were asked, you know, do people from a diverse culture or background, are they welcome in North Andover? Almost half agreed that, yes, they feel people are welcomed, but 15% disagreed and 36 were uncertain. So 51% disagrees with that statement, or they don't know if we're truly being inclusive. When paused with the question, have you witnessed or personally experienced harassment? 56% said no, but 44% said yes. And out of that, 36 said at least once, but 22% said on two or more occasions have they felt harassed or discriminated in North Andover. As far as civic participation, 10% responded that they don't feel comfortable sharing their opinion at public meetings, and 18% felt that their participation wouldn't really make a difference. And then when asked what they felt the town's role was moving forward in the DEI effort, 70% responded that we should do more to address DEI issues. 68% responded that they trusted us to do a good job about addressing DEI issues in North Andover. 35% responded that they felt the town should play the leading role. 38 felt that the town should let other, yes, 38% felt the town should let others do it, but be influenced by the work. And then 18% said they do not think the town needs to do anything. So out of all the data and the focus groups, Root Cause came up with their recommendations. So the first is to change the structure from a commission to a working group. So the working group, and this is a quote from the report, would be free, as a task force is, to operate outside of open meeting law in order to connect directly with residents in an informal setting, more conducive to trust building. We recommend, however, that the working group hold a regular series of public meetings transparent to all residents to share what the working group members have been doing and learning and make any decisions in an open forum. So one of the issues that arose from that unfortunate incident in December is that since the meeting was being taped, the link to the Google Meet was sent out to several people. So we had several people from the public join the meeting, and then the meeting recording was shared. And so I think that did a little bit more damage to the relationships. Rename the working group. Again, a quote from the report, we heard from many respondents that the term DEI is likely to be a polarizing one within North Andover. And multiple comments shared through the survey expressed resistance to the idea of DEI. Misconceptions are about what diversity and equity inclusion mean. So for example, they're merely about protecting individual feelings, or that they are used as a criticism of white people, making it difficult for any initiative to succeed. So what are we looking at for next steps? So they, they recommended that we train the working group members to develop, again, the shared understandings of concepts as related to diversity, equity, inclusion, and belonging. This group needs to establish clear goals and a timeline that we will share with the community, begin a one-on-one process of interviewing those with a diverse background within the community, and looking and taking a deep dive into the town's policies and procedures to ensure that they are inclusive. So that brings us to what we are recommending from the Town Manager's Office as next steps. So we're asking the Select Board to formally dissolve, because it is a Select Board Committee, the Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion Commission, and instead create a working group appointed by the town manager to have no more than seven members. We found that 16 members is just not an attainable-sized group, and so seven members is a far more reasonable membership. Communication with the existing DEI Commission membership. So I have been periodically updating them on the status of the different projects we've been doing, Root Cause, the equity audit, and asking them if they're interested in applying for a position with the working group. Then create a scope of work to engage the services of an experienced trainer and facilitator to assist with the next steps and with our action plan. And then we'll do outreach to other affinity groups within the community to seek volunteers to apply for the working group. Convene the working group. Again, I would act as facilitator in the initial stages, but I think it needs to be clear that my role is administrative support only, and that I should not function as the chair. That was another complication with the previous group in that I was supposed to be the interim chair, but no one stepped up to want to be chair. So I was continuing as the chair, which that's not the ideal role for this committee. And then again, to update the Select Board with a status update of the working group's progress so that we are still having that very outward-facing and very public and transparent process, just the meetings of the, the group would be not subject, would not be subject to the open meeting law.
And we're not expecting any action on this tonight, because this is a lot to absorb. So that's why we didn't put it on for any type of vote or anything.
So we should, so would they still apply as if the other boards and committees do? Or do you think there'll be a different process for, I mean, that's the kind of stuff we have to?
Yeah, I mean, we can work all that out. We probably would not have you go through the regular process because it's not a committee, right? So typically, with a working group, we would go out and talk to people we already have relationships with, right, because we know that they'd be very invested in, in working on this. And so that's typically how we would usually find a working group member.
What types of working groups have we had, like, in the recent past?
Trying to think of ones we've done here.
How about the, the lake, the house on the lake?
Yeah, so that was an official committee.
It was a committee, yeah.
Yeah.
I honestly don't recall any.
You don't recall any here? No?
In my time here. I have had in other communities.
I've had them, I did them in other communities. They usually are a positive way to deal with difficult issues. But I can't think of any that we've had.
I mean, for context, we did have one meeting where a member of the public did show up, and once they walked in the door, discussion stopped, because people didn't want to say the wrong thing, you know, in front of a member of the public. It had a chilling effect on the discussion.
And any, is there any history at all of the, of anyone from other communities challenging working groups that, you know, calling an end around to the open meeting law?
No. I mean, I, under the chart. And then, you'd have to vote to appoint all these people, and yeah, so...
Yeah, we, yeah, we don't, we don't want to do that.
How do you see the balance working with the seven members as far as community members versus employee? Like, would you keep, like, do you have something in mind, or?
I'd rather keep it mostly community members.
Community members.
It was, it's a lot of pressure on the employees.
Yeah. It's good. I've had a couple of people reach out to me because they are interested, so...
Oh, good. Excellent.
And we had some applications, too, for the commission, or that we were holding on...
Some really good ones have come in, so I'm very excited about that.
Okay.
Thank you.
It's been a long process, so I appreciate that you stuck with it and got us to this point.
So, you don't have a working name yet?
No working name.
We were gonna let the group name themselves.
That feels like the group's name.
They get their own naming rights.
So, we'll bring this, we'll put this back on your next meeting, which I think is September...
Right now, September sixteenth.
Sixteenth. And then, we'll go from there.
Yep. Okay.
That would be September twelfth or Friday. I was not doing a good job there. Sorry. I tried.
Thank you.
Thanks, Dee.
You did a nice job with the presentation, too.
Thank you.
Love that Canva. Okay, moving on to our consent items. Item A, accepting donation from Yard Rink of Street Hockey Rink valued at, for a street hockey rink, this is for the youth center, I think, right, valued at thirty-five hundred dollars. I'll probably take these all together.
Yes.
Donation from Wheelbrader for a thousand dollars for fireworks, a donation from Patricia Howes in memory of May Appleton Murray Judge, the amount of a hundred dollars for Appleton Playground, and accept donation for the Board of Library Trustees to the library, the amount of eleven thousand five hundred dollars for booking bill supplies and building improvements. I will take a motion on all four.
I make a motion to approve all four.
I'll second, and I'll add the usual.
You can be the...
We all, we're gonna take Dick's job over, to make sure that we thank these generous donors for all the gifts they've given.
Send out a letter.
I have a motion and an amended second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Excellent. Okay. Next up, approval of minutes from July fifteenth, two thousand twenty-four, for open session. Does anyone have a chance to review these?
Yes. All those approve. I'll second.
A motion is second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Next up, Select Board updates. You may add anything?
Come to the farmer's market. We're still looking to increase our, we go till the first weekend in October, so, then we're looking at...
It was very busy this weekend.
It was, and we would like to add people to our group, so, please come join us and get involved. We're all getting tired, and we want to see you keep going, so. Summer's all the farmer's market.
Just gonna change that item to, uh, farmer's market update?
Yeah.
We're gonna bug you all this weekend.
You got a very nice day this weekend, though, compared to some of those...
Finally, we've been, we have been...
The fish is cooked.
Roasted. It's been rough, but this weekend was beautiful.
I will say that the Kittredge School Building Committee met another MSBA milestone, and we submitted the PDP application, which is exciting. So, it's our, like, initial design intent in educational program. So, moving on to the next step.
Then, I guess I have to get off when you're done. I'll give a middle school update.
Well, you go, because I was just gonna say, so that people know that school might be delayed.
Very, very soon. The middle school project is going very, very well, but our acting superintendent is very prepared and has a plan in place should we need it, although there is no expectation that we will need it. But the right thing to do is to communicate to families what that plan would be, but it looks beautiful, and I'm ready to clean it myself if that's what we have to do over the weekend to get people in, so...
All hands on deck.
Yep.
It looks nice. The principal sent out an update with all the pictures and stuff.
He's been doing a good job of that, yeah.
It's beautiful.
And I'll echo Mr. Limpert's sentiments regarding National Night Out. Even though I wasn't able to attend, I know, I just, it was a great night, excellent weather, and thank you to...
Like, in between raindrops, really. Every week.
And thank you to all the vendors and all town staff. You also participated as part of that, so, always a great event every year.
It is. It's fun, and kids go home with all kinds of little things.
All kinds of stuff, right? Okay, Town Manager Report.
Sure. So, just quickly, a reminder that some of our surrounding communities are now elevated to a moderate risk for triple E for mosquitoes. We did spray in town back in the first week of August, but just take some enhanced precautions. We have, unfortunately, closed Stevens Pond due to just consistent high bacteria counts. This year is the first year that we did our own testing, so we had asked the water department to get certified. They did, which was amazing, and unfortunately, they were very busy, because it kept coming back very high. So, we have closed the pond. We're closing about five weeks early, and there are refunds that will be going back on people's credit cards. So, we look out for those. We wanted to extend our congratulations to Watts Water Technologies. They celebrate their one hundred and fiftieth anniversary this month, and they've actually been in North Andover since nineteen eighty-six on one fourteen, so it's very impressive. The fire department is rolling out a Community Connect program. So, it's a no-cost program that allows residents and businesses to sign up, create profiles, and give information about their home or business. So, basically, what medications they're on, whether you have pets in the house. If you're a business, you can actually upload your entire evacuation procedure, let you know if you deal with hazardous materials. And they're gonna be visiting various spots, including the senior center and the library, to get people signed up. So, we're very excited about that.
They're taking things like floor plans for buildings and that sort of stuff?
They'll take floor plans, yep, and all will get loaded in, and so, then, we respond. It automatically comes up in our nine-one-one system, and we can say, you know, "We know that they have nine propane tanks, two underground," right? Things that we typically wouldn't know, or "We know someone in that house has a heart condition," et cetera. So, it's a huge help. We previously had done it in other communities I've worked with and here, with a E-nine-one-one system?
That's what it, yeah.
That used to exist. That required annual sign-up again and fill out the forms again. This will send you an email asking you if you have any updates, but keeps you in the system. And so, this, I think, is a much preferred...
That's great.
Yeah, so, we're really excited to roll that out. The MRI report for the school's personnel review has been received and was shared by the school committee. The Clifton-Larson financial review is still pending, but we do anticipate seeing it by the end of this month. I also was gonna say, thank you for National Night Out. It was very fun. And I think the farmer's market could use a table. So, I think next year, we should...
Yeah, all right, all right.
Yes. And I noticed this...
I was away, but...
I noticed the school committee had a table this year, so I feel like next year, we'll have to have a selectwood table.
We should do that. I like it.
I wanted to recognize two firefighters who, Nick Martone and Kevin, whose last name is really hard to say, Martinili? Martili? I don't know, he's not helping me. They were both recognized by a resident for their prompt and care and response on the ambulance, and that resident took the time to write in to recognize them, which is really nice. Congrats...
I'm not gonna smear them like that.
Thank you. I tried. It was hard. Congrats to Julie Nygro on her promotion to police sergeant. And congrats to Officer Scarlett and Officer Wilson, who passed their public access test, which is huge. And tried to, she tried to be my new admin the other day and sat in the chair, but it didn't work out. She's not good on the phone. It's fine. And then, just an update on Bradford Street. As you know, selective enforcements continue. The speed monitor was supposed to be moved, I think, yesterday or the day before, from Mifflin, where we had it, to Bradford, so it should be there. And we do do some trimming along that street. I believe, actually, Officer Wilson also did trimming along with DPW. Don't tell DPW. So, we'll continue to work on that, but I wanted to keep you updated.
Thank you. Any questions for the Town Manager?
Stevens Pond, is there, I mean, we have, like, the aeration systems. Is there, I mean, just, obviously, just bad combination of, you know, hot weather, no precipitation?
It is that. So, we do, we have, about three years ago, we inserted four aerators, and we had a couple of really good years. This year, we had the combination of high heat and really no rain. However, we did open the hatch and flood out the pond, which is usually solves the problem, and it did not. So, what the issue really is, is the Canadian geese. It's really the geese. If you go down there, there's fifty geese in the water, and interestingly enough, geese go back to where they nested the year before. So, we need to, and what hap, we don't really populate that beach until the June timeframe when we start prepping it. So, we really need to figure out a way to disrupt the geese in March. So, we are putting a proposal together to talk about whether or not it makes sense to have dogs run the beach. Couple of other communities and colleges do that and have had good luck that way. So, we're looking at that right now. But I truly believe that the geese are the main culprit at this point. So...
Can they run the fields, too?
That would be nice. I mean, there's a lot of geese right now, and they are, and a lot of people have said to me, "Just get rid of them." They are protected through a treaty agreement with Canada, so we can't do that, unfortunately, but we can scare them away. So, that's the plan, and that's what we're looking at right now.
Officer Scarlett will just have another thing on her agenda to do.
I think Scarlett would probably play with the geese, and so, we're gonna have to go in a different direction, I think, than Scarlett.
I should join them in the frolicking in the water.
As much as I would enjoy that, I think we're gonna have to go in a different direction. And we've tried, you know, the fake ones don't work. Eventually, they land on them and, you know, mock us. So, we're trying, but it's definitely baby steps on the pond right now. And, you know, it's hard, because people are signing up for swim lessons. A lot of people use it. We had to have birthday parties, and the kids couldn't even go in the water, you know, so it's difficult. And so, we are also thinking about, you know, is it worth just kind of reframing the way that we even market the pond? And we're, have all these conversations off the off-season right now, so...
Can we get artificial geese that bark when they...
That would be nice.
When...
Me and Dee are just gonna go down there with legs and just wave them above our heads. I mean, it's...
When we're done cleaning the middle...
I meant the dog's bark to scare the, yeah, I said it wrong.
We gotta scare him early.
So, if you have an artificial dog or whatever, the goose sits on it, it barks.
It was funny. So, everybody had so many ideas, right? Because it was closed, and so, we heard a lot from the public with different things that people thought we should do. But it does seem like the dogs might be the way to go. So, we will, we're gonna research that for others.
They've used dogs for, for fields before.
Mm-hmm. Yeah. Yes.
Is it a service, or is it dog-like?
It's a service.
Yeah, if you're going down with your dog, that's what, no, holy kidding. I don't know.
That's fine.
There are, there are commercial companies that do that, that keep them off of, like, grassy areas of shopping centers and all that, you know? So, it's doable. So, we'll have to take down the positively "no dogs allowed" signs on the...
Yes, we will. I like when we optimistically don't allow things to happen.
Some people will complain about the dog.
Yeah.
All things being, you know, equal, given, you know, we're about just a year away, or a year removed, we're not complaining about not having too much rain.
No, we're not. I actually, no. On August eighth, it did rain at night, and I was so anxious, just looking out the window at it, like, "No, this isn't happening." We had a power outage, and I was like, "Oh," and then, everything went fine. So, that's good. And I did hear that, I think, Jamie's is opening in the next couple of weeks. Yeah, so, getting back to, to normal, which is good.
Mostly there, yep.
And don't forget, we received the MassWorks grant, yeah, to do the tributary study as well as lake-level analysis. And we're working right now with a consultant on making sure that scope is a hundred percent where we want it, but that's gonna be really helpful.
Excellent. Excellent. All right, our next scheduled meeting is September sixteenth. We have that down, we'll say it's a working session?
I think we're gonna need...
Because we have, there will be another meeting the following Monday, the twenty-third, so it's on our schedule. So, I don't know if we want to try and pull something forward and do the working session sooner, because that goes another month before we meet.
Yeah.
I'm open-minded of people...
Or think about it and let us know.
Yeah, I'll take a look at it. So, right now, we just circulated all the goal forms to the departments and had them fill in, you know, where they are right now. We usually do that quarterly. So, they're doing that, and then, ask them if they have any new goals they want to bring forward. So, let me see what we get with that process, and then, we can think of whether or not we want to have a second, another meeting added.
Okay.
We usually do that, you know, off-site.
Yep.
So, we'll think about that.
Okay. All right, so, potentially, our next, or currently, our next scheduled meeting is the September sixteenth as a working session, and we'll, you know, if that changes. But other than that, I'll take a motion.
So, move.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you all.